John, do you want to start?
Alter order.
I believe we have enough people here to constitute a quorum. So why don't we begin the regular meeting of the Southold Local Development Corporation here on March 16th at right around 4:02. So Lisa, do you want to take us to the agenda? You wrote it, so why don't we do it that way and we'll each respond?
Sure, okay. So the first item on the agenda is our 2021 audit, which, I'm sorry. This is actually, we should start out with the
Audit Committee.
Audit Committee. I apologize. So this is 4:02, we're starting the Southold LDC Audit Committee. Same thing anyway. The first thing on the agenda is the 2021 audit, which was previously sent around. Does anyone have any questions, anything that they would like to discuss? We had a clean opinion, there was no management letter. It's a pretty straightforward audit, in my opinion.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, having been down this road before, I don't have any questions. But I don't know if anyone newer to the board does.
No, it was, I wrote, it's a really pretty
There's not much to talk about.
So, no, I don't, I don't have any questions. Steve, do you have any questions? I mean, I know you got a
I'm good, guys.
Yeah.
Okay.
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 So I think we can approve the audit.
I would like a motion for the committee to recommend the audit to the full board. And Jean, as our treasurer, I think you should abstain from this vote.
Right. I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then I think we can adjourn the Audit Committee meeting unless anybody has any other business.
I'll move that too.
That was Francis and John?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that, I'm sorry, was with Jean abstaining. Okay, so now it is still 4:04, and I think we should call the Southold LDC Regular Meeting to order. Sorry, just taking notes.
Yep, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now, the first item on the agenda is our 2021 audit, which has previously been discussed in our Audit Committee. And the consensus of the Audit Committee was to present it, to accept it, to recommend that the board accept the audit. Does anyone have any questions? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Francis and John, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next item, the next item on the agenda is our 2021 Paris Reports. Just to remind everyone, Paris is, and Greg and Steve, if you guys have questions on this, please chime in because this is a particular system, it's particulars, the public authorities reporting information system is particular to public authorities. The Paris Report is made up of four components. The annual report, the finance report, the investment report, and the procurement reports. So we take it all together, and I apologize. It is our Paris Report. It's been sent to everybody previously. One important piece of it is the the audit must be entered into Paris. So sorry, so that's that, those are the four pieces that were were sent out previously. I didn't send the piece that is really just attaching the audit because it just seemed silly to send the audit and the thing that we just attach it to. So anybody have any questions on it?
No, I thought it was fine.
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, state for the record that the audit, having worked in state government for many years and dealt with the Paris system, it's a difficult reporting system. So sometimes for people newer to it, some of the questions don't quite fit who we are, what we are, and sometimes makes it difficult for to us to submit a report that makes perfect sense. So if you see anything in there that looks strange or or not applicable, where we may not have the option to to choose not applicable, that is a function of the Paris reporting system.
I have been speaking to New York State EDC, which is sort of an umbrella group of IDAs and LDCs, about maybe reaching out to the state to see if there's the opportunity for some of us to work with the state to make this a better program. Because I feel a little bit like it's, it's a, it's a lengthy process and we spend a lot of time doing it. And I feel like the information that they get from it is not as robust as it could be if it were if it asked, I think when they're asking some of the questions, they think they're getting an answer when they're not always. And they're getting inconsistent responses from from one organization to the next because there's a lot of ambiguity in it. So I don't, I don't know that that's going to happen, but I have raised my hand more than once to say I'd be happy to participate in that process. We'll see if that that comes to fruition.
Thank you for for that initiative. It's, you know, would be benefiting many, many people throughout the state.
It would also benefit, you know, sometimes I look at newspaper articles that talk about IDAs and LDCs, and I say, they got that from Paris, from, I know exactly where they pulled that from, and that's not good information. But you think it's going to be good information. So I would I don't know if I'd be happy to do it, but I would be pleased if it could be a better program. So we'll see.
Yep.
Does anybody have anything else about Paris? So do we have a motion to accept it? Once it's accepted, I have to certify, I'll have to put the audit in. I didn't want to do that until you guys had reviewed the audit. And then I'll just have to certify it. It's due by March 31st. Obviously, we have plenty of time. It's a few clicks of a button. So so it will be certified in ample time. Do I have a motion to accept Paris?
I'll move it.
I second. Thank you, Jean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is banking. There's sort of two pieces to this. I'm going to actually take it out of order just because I think deposits is pretty straightforward. We have annual fees that are due from our projects. We bill them, this is sort of our compliance period, I guess. So we bill them for their annual fees now. We receive those, those checks, no problem. It was 11, there's $11,275 of deposits that have gone in. Jean, I sent you the deposit slips. And I apologize, I had a copy of one of the checks and I think I copied the same check twice. So I don't have the other check. I can get it if we need it for some reason. But I do have the deposit slips, which were provided. So I just wanted to let you know that 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 money was put in. Does anybody have any questions? The next item on the agenda is investments. I'm going to sort of turn that over if if John and Jean don't mind talking about some options we have. I, I'm happy to do whatever you guys would like. I just need some direction on it, I think.
Jean, do you want to, do you want to discuss this? You want me to jump in, cut up to you?
John, why don't you start us off and then?
So, so as we all know, we have a bit of money. And for a variety of reasons, it's basically just been sitting in what the equivalent is of a bank checking account. So we aren't any interest on it. We aren't maximizing its value to anybody. On the other hand, we haven't been filing what's called an investment audit or an audit of our investments since we haven't had any. So what we've asked Lisa to do several times is to go to the bank that's holding our money and discuss what best ways there might be to at least earn a little bit of money. And at first, what Lisa discovered is if we took our money and we invested it at the rate then offered, which was a few weeks ago, of 50 basis points, we would then have money invested and we would be paying to have the auditors overlook our investments, which meant we would have made $500 and paid $500 for the investment audit. So it seemed a little foolish to run around trying to make $500 to spend it on a professional. But Lisa said, I'll do whatever you want me to do, which, which I thought was was exactly what we wanted to hear from Lisa. You know, let's do what the right thing is, but let's not do something that makes any sense. So so I called Jean up and Jean reminded me, as we all should know, that today we have a 25 basis point increase, at least in the Fed funds rate, which is not going to automatically translate into a 25% increase in offered rates. But at least it suggests that for once, we're on the right side of things. And that if we wish to move, now is a good time to consider moving and putting some of the money to work. And Jean, I believe in conversation with you and also in further emails, what you thought might be best is to go back to the bank and discuss sort of a ladder approach, a one, a two, a three-year CD with parts of the money in each opportunity, which I think sounds like a pretty good idea. And it would allow us to invest the funds at, you know, sort of a ladder rate. So we weren't getting all the same rate and have all the money coming back to us at the same time off the same rate. And at the same time, we don't think we're going to need much of this money over the next several years. We're really only drawing down something like $10,000 a year, maybe a little bit more to cover our expenses to the extent they exceed the annual fees that are paid to us. So that seems to be a pretty good idea. But Jean, do you want to further comment? And obviously, Steve and Francis, if you have any thoughts, let's have the discussion and try and give Lisa some good direction in terms of what she should go back to the bank about.
I think that with the movement in rates today, you know, as John just mentioned, it's, it's going to be lagging on the deposit side of the house. However, a lot of people are going to be clamoring because our interest rates have been so low for so long. So I think that we will see banks start to move things at least marginally over the next couple of weeks. In anticipation, we know there are supposed to be significant interest rate movements this year. So to that end, I do think that if we want to do something, that we not tie all of our money up with one due date, that we kind of stretch it out, maybe we invest some now, maybe we see what money market rates, if they're going to change in the next couple of weeks or not, we can put money in there and keep some of that very liquid. But there's not going to be a whole lot out there, but there certainly are indicators that things will be moving and that we might have a better opportunity to earn a few dollars.
And in particular, I think many of us, who I've been trying to get back in touch with the markets myself in the last several days, the two-year treasury rate has jumped enormously. So, you know, we might want to go back and look at something like, you know, 30, 30, 30, 1, 2, and 3. You could balance it differently. But I think what what might be good, Lisa, is for you just to ask them on a weekly basis to come back to you every week with the CD rates for 1, 2, and 3 years. And then how do we want to phrase the direction to Lisa? I mean, as long as we make more than $500 on the aggregate investment of $90,000, then it makes sense to be doing it. So
Because, John, I do have a question. What is the definition of an investment under needing the audit? Is a money market account, quote unquote, an investment? I guess it's the question. Or is there some account out there?
We've been going along, basically, because we haven't been actively managing the funds in any way, we feel very comfortable saying we aren't making any investment. My guess is that just about anything would be considered an investment other than a checking account or just leaving it in a bank with a, with the FDIC insurance. That's my guess. So it, my thought, we don't have to, we don't have to yet decide whether what we've done constitutes an investment for the next year's audit. However, I do think that we should be cognizant of if we make some kind of an investment and earn less than $500 over the next year, then we may have put ourselves in a situation where it's costing us to affect our money. I think it's as simple as that, really.
Right, John, so I guess here's what my question would be. I don't think a money market account is an investment because by definition, there's no duration on it. It's the same thing as keeping it as cash. And if money markets are paying something like 50 basis points, why don't we just put it in a money market and be done with it? Then you don't have to do an audit. And I don't think a one-year, two-year CD is going to be much different than 50 basis points, particularly if you have to take 500 away from them. That's what I'm trying to get to. Does that make sense?
It does.
Well, and we could certainly seek clarity on that point. I mean, I agree with you, Steve, on on a money market not being considered an investment. But if anything else, like a CD, we should get clarity from the auditors as to how that would be characterized. And if that is the case, then it may, it may make sense to to go the the money market route.
Money markets will always bear the lowest
Yes.
possible rate. The lowest possible rate. Yeah, also because it's slowest possible risk and because there's no duration and because you get the money back immediately. So, so in effect, I, I think rates are going up, but rates, I think, will go up slower in the money market. And, and I, I'm a bit more in favor of the latter approach that Jean suggested, only because I think it may make us a little bit more money. And I don't know personally whether a bank CD constitutes an investment, especially if it's obviously in an amount that's FDIC insured. So
John, if you would remind me, how much money are we talking about?
We probably want to put about $100,000 to work.
Okay, so 50 basis points, right, is $500.
Exactly.
So if a CD pays 1% and the money market pays 60 basis points, you're making money by going to a money market. That's what I'm trying to
If, if you assume that that the money market, I mean, that the CD is in fact characterized as an investment.
Hey, I totally agree.
Yeah, why don't we do this in two parts and get an answer to that question?
Well, I, I suspect that we are supposed to be doing an investment audit regardless of what we're doing with our money. That's, that's probably, I don't, nobody's ever said that we must do it, but I also haven't dug down real deep to find that answer. I suspect that if we have money doing something, the auditors might, anything, the auditors might push that issue. They, they haven't yet, but that doesn't mean that if we did something, anything with the money that they wouldn't. Because I think we probably are supposed to be having an investment audit regardless of whether we invest or not.
Could you find out what an investment audit is? Because if it's sitting in a CD or in a money market account, I'm not sure what they audit. And I'd love to know what they would charge, why they would charge you $500 to look at a statement.
Right.
I mean, I'm not trying, right?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we get a little more information from them?
I think that the, the charge is just their exposure. You know, I think that's what it boils down to.
But again, Lisa, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but there's no exposure to read a bank statement.
I, I am, I don't, I don't take it as argumentative. It's, we're flushing this out, we're figuring it out. That's what I, that's what I suspect. I suspect that we probably are supposed to be doing it now anyway, but it hasn't really become an issue. But, you know, we could, we could invest the money in we, I, if you guys give me some thresholds, if you say to me, let's assume we have to do the audit, just for argument's sake. So if it's anything above that we're making more than the 500, then it's worth doing, then that's, that could be the threshold. And if it's under 500, and I just want to let you know that $500 fee for the audit, that was from a few years ago, last time they gave me that. So that may have changed. I don't know if that's necessarily a good number.
The money market is going to be a floating rate, right? It's not a fixed rate, it's floating rate. Rates go down, money market
Right. It's subject to change. It looks like DIME has a tiered money market rate available. Doesn't tell me what it is, but that the more you put in, obviously, the more you have an opportunity to make. So that's something that we could take a look at.
Does it make sense, guys, for us as a board to just ask the treasurer to work with Lisa and do what they think makes sense?
Jean, do you have time to do that?
Sure.
All right.
Happy to delegate that to
Again, I mean, you know, if you do a money market, going in saying, we'll make $500 because it's paying 50 basis points, and rates are only going to go up, but believe me, many of us have spent our careers saying rates are only going to go up, and they don't. So I don't really, I don't think anybody is going to criticize us for earning $450, $450 and paying $500 for the audit because no one's going to really get into that, that level of detail even on our audit. But again, I, a floating rate instrument can't, you can't, you can't assure me that a floating rate instrument will pay you any particular rate over any particular period of time, unless you know where interest rates are going, in which case you're a smarter man than I am.
I think that's true, but I, and I feel like we're beating a dead horse here. But, but, but I will say that if, if Lisa, if it is in fact something we should be doing, then it becomes a moot point as to whether it's a money market versus a tiered structure. We would just go ahead. If we have to do it, we really should be doing it. We should get confirmation on that. If we really should be doing it, then we should just move forward with what will make the most money at that point in time.
Okay. So now, and Jean, you've been delegated with, with the responsibility of working with Lisa and making a decision as to how we should invest. We should, we should agree that
So is that a motion?
Not yet.
Yeah, okay.
We should agree, though, that it's, we shouldn't be investing more than about $100,000, right? Well, I guess the money market makes a difference, doesn't it?
Money market doesn't, but the laddered tier
Anything other than a money market, anything that's not instantly liquid, we should, we shouldn't invest more than $100,000. And we shouldn't go past a three-year, a three-year final life. That'd be, that would, those are my two criteria. No more than 100 and a final no longer than three years. And then Jean and Lisa can do pretty much whatever they determine to be the best option. So now I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
But let's, let's, let's tell Lisa what it is. The board hereby delegates to Jean to work with Lisa to create an investment strategy for up to $100,000 of our free, free cash, not to exceed a three-year final maturity. And it all shouldn't be in the same maturity either, so that you're not waiting three years in case. And that'd be what I make as a motion.
And I would just amend that to say we should get an answer to whether or not, definitive answer as to whether or not we should be doing that part of the audit in the first place.
Agreed. So it's really two motions. Lisa, so let's make that two motions. Let's have Lisa reach out to the, to the auditors to see what an investment is. And then let's agree that Lisa and Jean should come up with an investment strategy that takes no more than three years, but no more than $100,000 of the cash that we have.
Okay, well, I'll move the first part since I'm the one who said it.
And I'll second the first one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll move the second part because I said second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Jean, I will, we'll get together and we will come up with a plan. If you direct me, I'm happy to do the work. Okay.
Deal.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, does anybody have anything else for, for banking? Okay, next item on the agenda is the board assessments. They have to be posted on the website, not, not your individual assessments, but a synopsis of the responses. So I will put in an average, I guess is the best way to do it. They were all, all across the board, they were all agrees. So it's going to be pretty straightforward, but that will be posted on our website. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. I don't think you need to adopt them because you, you've sent it to me and it's just, that's just an FYI. I just wanted you to be aware that I was doing that. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the payment for Jones Little CPAs for our 2021 audit. It's $1,300.
Yeah, just remind me how that relates. I think it went up, but not by
It went up, it was 1,250 last year, it's 1,300 this year. The next item on the agenda is auditors for 2020 because they're Jones Little quoted us 1,750, which was a significant increase. And so I did get some, I got another quote, so we, we can talk about that, but
Okay. Yeah.
I, yes, I, I moved to approve the payment to Jones Little for 2021.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jean. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I'll get their invoice and get that over to you, Jean, when, when I have it from them.
Lisa, if we, if they can get that to us, because I'm about to send some paperwork to John for signature, so
Yes, I will, I'll get it, I'll get it from them hopefully today. If not today, then tomorrow.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of auditor for 2022. We tabled this at the last meeting when I mentioned to you that their fee was going up. I reached out to Mr. Colomus at Steve's recommendation or suggestion, and he gave us a quote of $4,000. So seems like Jones Little is still, even with their increase, still lower than we're going to find elsewhere. So I leave it up to you, but we have, we should appoint our auditor for 2022.
Yeah. I, based on fees that I've seen paid in the past, it, it doesn't seem out of the realm of reasonableness.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm willing, I'm willing to stay with Jones Little.
How long have we been with them? That, I mean, that's the, the other question that we should always be asking. How many years?
So I think it's since inception, so since 2014.
Yeah, this biggest deal we've ever had.
Yeah. They've done partner rotations as required.
And Francis, I understand your comment completely, but I think where I feel particularly comfortable is the fact that we really don't have any complex transactions.
Yeah, I agree. Very good point. Yeah, no, it's just, it is the, you know, but as long as there's been a partner rotation, at some point, we obviously will have to look at it. And as Jean said, if there's significant activity. But as long as there's been a partner rotation, then I think we're okay.
And two years ago, Lori LaPonte was the partner that we had. And last year and this year, we worked with Kathy Galloway. And Kathy, I apologize that she couldn't be at this meeting, but I, I felt she was very responsive to the few questions that we had early on. So I felt like everybody was probably in a good place with review of the audit.
So if there were something to actually present, then, you know, it wouldn't
It would have been, yeah.
It would have been different.
Yeah.
So let's move to retain Jones Little for the 2022 audit. I'd make such a motion.
Thank you, John. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jean, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. The, the next item is appointment of a contracting officer. This is kind of a little bit of housekeeping. We have no contracts, we don't do any procurement. It seems a little bit silly, but it is something that we're supposed to have. So John has volunteered. I don't know if you changed your mind between, between
No, I'm fine, I'd be happy to be the procurement officer, whatever you want to call it. I'd be happy if, if the board approves that, that's fine with me.
Thank you, John.
Do, do we have a motion to appoint John as our
I make a motion to appoint him as contracting officer.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Francis, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is appointment of an ethics officer. This is another thing that we're required to have. The, we do have an ethics policy, which is on our website. And you know, I guess, I guess it's, if there were an ethics concern, there's someone who's responsible for doing the analysis and reviewing the, the potential violation. doing the analysis and reviewing the, the potential violation. So nobody really responded that they were interested in being the ethics officer. I don't mind being your ethics officer if you'd like me to. I don't expect that it's going to be inordinate. It's probably going to be about the equivalent of the amount of work that, that John is our contracting officer is responsible for. But I, I also don't mind not being the ethics officer. So, you know, whatever, whatever you guys think.
Well, I'm not sure if it, if the ethics officer should be somebody other than the one paid.
I would that too.
So as much as I appreciate the offer, perhaps it should be one of us. I mean, I think in the reality, any, any abuse would ultimately get referred to the state. You know, there's not, you know, the state, state ethics, but.
Yep. Well, I think the town, that might be our first stop is.
Or the town, well, certainly discussed with.
Yeah.
The town before, but, but if there were truly some malfeasance going on, you know, ultimately would end up, you know, at a state ethics level, I think. Maybe not. And, and perhaps Greg, you know the answer to that, you know, in terms of how the, the town works, but in any case, to the point, if you, I would volunteer to be the ethics officer if that's helpful.
Thank you, Francis.
Just speaking real quick about how the town handles ethics complaints. There is an ethics board and there is a complaint process where one can file a complaint, but it's just a very general process.
That's, that's helpful. Good to know, especially now that I may be the ethics officer. We'd certainly want to run it through the town, but because the LDC is sort of authorized by state legislature, you know, it's a little confusing as to where it should go. Maybe it should ultimately go to both places.
Would you like?
The town is the, the town is the old, is the only member of the LDC. I think that's the phrasing. So, so we are a town piece.
Right, except the LDCs were authorized by state law.
Yes.
So that's my only, but in any case, we'd start with the state and figure out where to go. I mean, with the, with the town and figure out where to go.
Do you want me to bridge a contact with this, the town ethics committee and you? To clarify this, do you want me to get clarification from them? I'm happy to do whatever the board would like.
Thank you. It probably, assuming that they vote for me to be the ethics officer, it would probably be important for me at least to have that connection. I'm not sure any further conversation needs to be had at this point, but I would need to know who to go to.
All right, that's great. And I actually honestly need to figure out who the individual person is on the ethics committee who you would file a complaint with. So it'll be a good educational experience for me to.
Good. Okay, great. Thank you, Greg.
In the interest of full disclosure, my wife is on the ethics board of the Towns Apple. Just so you know.
That's a good reason why you shouldn't be the ethics officer.
Volunteer.
All right. So I volunteered. Should, should we, do we need a motion?
Motion.
I move Francis be our ethics officer.
Thank you.
I second. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Gene. I think. And I didn't, I abstained.
Thank you.
And then I will follow up with the ethics committee to figure out, you know, who that point of contact is for Francis.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. And thank you, Francis. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of our secretary. So I realized that Steve joined the board and Norrie left at the same time. And it didn't even, I never even thought about that she was our secretary. And now we have a, a vacancy in our secretary. So I spoke to Steve the other, I emailed with Steve the other day, and he said that he would be interested in being our secretary. We still do have an open
Board.
Board spot. We have, we have our member position is still open, but do I have a motion to appoint Steve as our secretary?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Francis. Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
The next.
Can I? Try it.
The next item on the agenda is a, a policy that we're required to have. It's an incentive additional compensation policy. What I would recommend that we adopt is that this board does not give incentive or additional compensation. Obviously, if you'd like to do something different, I think it probably only impacts me. Fine, if you want to handle it differently, but I don't think that incentive or additional compensation is really appropriate in, in this, in this situation. So that, that was, that would be the policy that I would suggest, just brief and to the point. We don't do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I, I think there should always be the ability, and there is the ability to amend the policy at a future date. Should that be, should it make sense? But given our current structure, it doesn't seem to.
Nope.
So let's make a motion that we have a pop, a policy in which the SLDC pays no incentive for additional compensation.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, just, does anyone have anything else that they wanted to discuss? I could move on to our old business. There's nothing. Okay, the minutes were sent previously. Did anyone have any questions?
I did not.
Do we have a motion to accept the, the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Francis.
Second.
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As I, as, thank you, as I indicated before, we do have an open board position. I actually reached out to somebody in the clerk's office to see if we could have that ad run again. And I apologize, I didn't hear back from her and I need to follow up with her, but I'm going to pursue having that run again. Greg, just so you know, we, we have an open position that you know, it would be nice if it, if it were filled. And we were fortunate enough to, to have Steve join our board after we ran an ad. The, the town ran, ran an ad for us, seeking someone who is interested in joining our board. So I'm going to reach out to the clerk's office again and see if that's something that the town would be interested in doing. I suspect that it's going to come to the town board for you guys to approve running the ad. So I just wanted to give you a heads up as our liaison. I can CC you on that email if you'd like, or I could just go through the clerk's office.
Yeah, whatever you think is easier. And if you need help pushing it forward, I have a great relationship with Dennis, so I'd be happy to talk to him too.
Okay. Okay. It, it's, it's a pretty straightforward ad, which is sort of a little bit about what we are and see if anybody's interested in joining. So I, I will, I'll loop you.
Just let me know. Yes, yep.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. The only other thing, unless somebody has anything else, is our next meeting is our finance committee and our budget meeting, and that's in like September, October time period. Does have, anyone have anything else that they wanted to discuss?
Well, I, I'm not sure it's a discussion, but just the ongoing, you know, issue of projects, you know, because all of this is for naught if, if we can't actually contribute to, to the town. And I'm, I'm not suggesting we disband, but, but to the extent that we can continue to keep our ears and eyes open for potentials. I know we've exhausted this subject and discussed it at prior board meetings, but again, you know, just for, for the record, I'm always sensitive to make sure that if somebody does actually listen to our, our board meetings, that they understand that that's something that we continue to endeavor to, to do is to find appropriate projects.
And Lisa, you haven't heard back from Pecanic School, right? Yeah, the only one that we have had any even remote interest from is Pecanic Community School. And we're still waiting for them to get back to have hired an advisor from up in Boston, Zion's, Zion's Public Finance. And hopefully we'll have a conversation with them. My suspicion is, just so you know, they will do a term sheet sort of approach and, and, and get back proposals. In this day and age, commercial banks are most likely not going to select tax exempt as an option, only because there's so little benefit to the banks. But there may be an institutional fund or some other potential investor who comes back with a, with a stronger offer. In which case, I suspect they would come to us almost naturally, but it would be good if we could reach out one more time, Lisa, and try and see if we can't set up some kind of a call with, with the Zion's people, just to let them know that we're not only local, but very available and very willing to work for them.
I will. I'll try.
I think they're going to, I think they're going to wait till they put a term sheet out and have, have responses come back and then make the call as to whether it's taxable or tax exempt based on the level of, of response and the sort of rates proposed in the responses. And again, I think commercial banks will probably not go the tax exempt route, whereas there may be other investors who will.
I have an idea, which may be a bad one, but if, since we're running the ad for an additional board member, and obviously our interest in additional board member would be other exposure, other ideas about where we might be able to be helpful. Is it worth mentioning, you know, soliciting ideas? The danger there, of course, is that people don't understand enough about what we do to come up with ideas that work. But just, just a thought. And again, maybe not a good one.
Yeah, I, I don't know how that, the, the ad in and of itself was, as you recall, heavily, I won't call it edited, but, but we all got together and drafted it. And we were sort of happy with what we said in it after all of us had significant opportunity to comment. So if we are going to somehow in the ad, add a paragraph or something else that says, you know, even if you don't want to join, reach out if you have ideas, that we should recirculate the ad, Lisa, and let's figure out how we get that thought into the ad.
Well, maybe I'm complicating things unnecessarily. Maybe there's some other survey or some other way that we might be able to solicit ideas that's not through an ad. You know, we just, we run this ad as it is.
Good.
And, you know, maybe there's some kind of survey mechanism that could be used or something to think about for the future.
Greg, this came up once before. I don't think that we ever appropriately followed up with it, which is there's got to be some kind of approval process for major projects within the town. I don't even know how to define major project, but wouldn't a developer or someone else looking to add or expand ultimately be speaking to somebody in the town? Would it be in planning or development or some other?
Yeah. So, so my initial thought here would be, it would be contingent on them requiring site plan approval. So that would be dictated by making changes to their building. Just changing the business itself. I can't think, at least off the top of my head, of any trigger that would, would do that.
It would be interesting to know if the Pecanic School has submitted a site plan because in our initial discussions, we were, we were, the indication was that, that they were going to finance only the acquisition price of the land and building. But given that they're buying a church and running a school, it seems unlikely that they'll be running a school inside an unaltered church building. But, you know.
Yeah.
And. Price agree. A month.
Yeah. And my, my read of just that, from a process standpoint, is they would first purchase the building and then they, and then they would go to the, the plan.
Trigger person. Okay.
Yeah. I do, you know, and I, I, I don't know what the answer is here, but I do know that the town is starting to begin work on an affordable housing plan that as is kind of tied to the, the Pecanic Bay Region Community Housing Act that, that was passed by the state back in October. And we are going to be hiring a consultant to put together a plan for us. And there's a ton of flexibility in here for public-private partnerships and bonding of land, purchasing of land. I don't, I don't have any specific idea in my head, but I don't know if this is something the board wants to be part of the discussion of at some point as we think about this.
I think it would be very interesting if the consultant were to join us at his, her convenience, once they've been selected. And to, because, because again, what we offer is conduit taxes and financing.
Yep.
And I don't, I've never completely understood all the ins and outs of financing low, you know, low-cost housing, low-income housing, but through taxes and financing. There are things you can, the things you can't do, structures you can, texts you can't use. And I know that not a lot of it is done by private developers using taxes and finance, not a lot of it. So it would frankly be helpful. It would also give the consultant some awareness, and I'm sure the consultant would mention us in the report. Therefore, it might help lead a potential developer towards us if the developer were knowledgeable enough to think, oh, I can qualify. So.
Yeah.
John, should one of us or you and I perhaps reach out to them? Because if they come to us because of public record, right? As a board meeting, but can we?
Yeah. Think of who, because, look, I don't need to be there, but if more than two of us are there, it's practically a meeting. So we kind of have to be careful about how many of us meet with a consultant without having, you know, inadvertently created a board meeting. So I don't have to be there. I know you'd like to be there, Steve. Francis, you might like to be there. So why don't we, well, we, at least for this purpose, why don't we consider Francis and Steve to be the contacts for this? And see if the consultant is willing to meet with them. And then maybe you three, the consultant, you two can come to an agreement as to time and, and approach. And if we can have further discussion, if anybody wants to call me after someone has identified it because the discussion starts, I'm fine to be, to listen, but I, I don't want the, the three of us to show up and have a board meeting.
And I guess just to, you know, the request for proposal has not even been put out for the consultant yet. So, so we are still.
Keep us in mind then.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm just throwing it out there as an FYI and, and just as we're talking about potential opportunities for the board to be involved. So.
And if I, if I can help facilitate in any way, I'm available, even if it's just to coordinate scheduling of the meetings.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
And, and Lisa, if you do get a response from anybody at Pecanic, sort of email everybody. Because I think, you know, Francis, you might want to join that call. Steve, you might want to join that call. I don't have to be on that call, if you know what I mean. We just have, all we're trying to do is indicate to Zion's that if financing does become an option for them, we're the most appropriate issuer because we're local and we care. You know what I mean? I think that's a very simple message to, to, to give them. Okay? That's all I had on that.
And just if you don't get any feedback there, I am good personal friends with one of the founders of the school. So.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
Happy to work.
You on any, any circulation of communication, we'll put you on that list, Greg, just so you know.
Okay. I, when I reach out, I will, I'll CC you and maybe that'll, that'll be helpful.
Yep.
If, is it time to adjourn, guys? You think?
Do we have anything else?
I have another meeting at five, so.
I think we better, we better make a motion to adjourn. Francis, you make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right.
All in favor?
All in.
Aye.
Hey.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for getting today's pleasure. Good to see you.
Nice to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.